About to start the program? Yes, so you are speaking. Yeah, please come in. Mister Darling, can you please bring your folks in? Can you please bring your folks in without the start? We're just waiting for more folks coming in, so just waiting as soon as they get in and get started. So we're now waiting for the church to be packed and be filled up with people before we start, so we're gonna start now. So the Anthrosh of Honorability, they're out there, so we're calling them to come in, so we can start the program. So if you can please stand, if you are able to, please stand to welcome Honorable Musa Hassan Belitie. Thank you. While we make our standing, we will just invoke the presence of God and just give a thirty-second moment of silence. So if you please stand just for thirty seconds. Thank you. You may be seated. So once again, if you're just joining us, I'd like to say welcome to the Brooklyn United Methodist Church. This church is actually Brooklyn Center, do you know that? But a lot of people say they're here from all over the metro and beyond. So I'd like to say welcome to you all. And for those of you who just joined us, we have bathrooms upstairs of this building and we also have bathrooms downstairs. Both middle and female bathrooms downstairs. So welcome to the Citizen Movement for Change. This is a town hall meeting being hosted by the Citizen Movement for Change, CMC. And we have with us a special guest, Honorable Musa Hassan Belitie. Member of the Liberian House of Representatives, representing District Seven from Nema County, that's around the south of here. So I'd like to say welcome, Honorable Belitie, welcome to Minnesota, welcome to Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, and welcome to the United Methodist Church here in Brooklyn Center. So we will now have... We will now have our welcome remarks by Miss Victoria Senobu Zulu, with the Global Secretary for CMC.
Good evening everyone, thank you so much for giving the opportunity. Our political leader, Mister Honorable Musa Hassan Belitie, and also our representative from District Number Seven in Macam. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members, valued members of our community. Welcome to our town hall meeting hosted by Citizen Movement for Change, Minnesota chapter. We are here to see many familiar faces that I know and also some new friends tonight. This evening is vital opportunity to engage with us, share your thoughts, and contribute to the democracy process that shape our future. Our focus tonight is simple, and that is to open the doors to ensure that every voice is heard. We are here to discuss important issues. Facing our ability, share our greatest vision as well. Explore how we can work together to create positive change. We will have chats to hear from our local representatives. Engage in meaningful discussion and ask questions. Your input matters. It is your idea and concern that drive our community to serve you better. So let's make this an interactive, informative, most importantly, a respectful session. We encourage you to speak up, share your thoughts, and let's collaborate to achieve a brighter future for the community. All I give you. Thank you for being here, let's get started.
Thank you, Mickey, and once again, I'd like to say welcome to you all and welcome to this program. As she said, this is gonna be very interactive. We hope that this will be a very healthy exchange between you and the political leader of CMC and all the officials here. Please turn off your cell phones, if you have your cell phones with you or put it on vibrate. So we are streaming this program live on KFTV, so if you can go on your Facebook pages, you can share this event to your world. And there are also sign-up sheets at the entrance there in the vestibule. If you would like to sign up, register to be a member of CMC, you can do that outside. We have folks there who will be helping you get through that process. In the meantime, I'd like to recognize a few folks before we get deep into the program. I'd like to welcome and recognize Adaman Yomboyah. He is from the Feribol City Council, so it's not just for Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center. So we have a Liberian brother who is in Feribol, that's the city of forty-five minutes south of Twin Cities, who is on the city council. We'd like to say welcome, thank you. We also like to say welcome and recognize the presence here of Liberia's former ambassador to Guinea, Ambassador Sini Belitie. I'd like to say welcome to you and thanks for being here today. We'd like to say welcome and recognize the presence of Etho Delian Carter Jr. He's a former mayor of Venetor City, Venetia, Monstirata County, and Assistant Minister of Urban Affairs, Financial Returnal Affairs. Mister Carter was the founding member of the Liberian Council Mayor and became the president of the council. Mister Carter, I'd like to say welcome. We also like to welcome our business people here. There are a lot of business people in the house, and we'd like to say welcome to you all. First, I would recognize the presence of Mister Walter Cooper of M&amp;M Shipping and Forwarding. Mister Cooper, I'd like to say welcome and thanks for being here. I'd like to say welcome to the biggest Liberian businessman here and my friend and brother, Mister Maula Kamara of the Water South Market. So once again, welcome to you all, it's great being here, CMC appreciates your presence. And like we said earlier and like what Mrs. Senobu Zulu said, this will be a very active, interactive, engaging conversation here. So in the meantime, let's have a musical selection by Zerri Carter, Walter Harris.
Alright, one note to the people of Liberia. Alright, here we go. A little difficult, but I'll be back later on.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to let you know we have water in the back. So if you need a drink of water, you can step aside and get water in the back. Please, please hold on to your empty water bottles, take them out when you're done, because they have service here for water, we have to ensure that the place is as clean as we made. So we'll move on with the program while trying to address the technical problems that the musicians have out there. So now we have a brief history of CMC Minnesota, of CMC as a whole, by the Minnesota, the head of the Minnesota chapter, Mister Johnson Chester Dohle.
Thank you, Walter. And I'd like to make one. Just, I would announce that we have CMC t-shirts all day, cap, custom memorials all day, so you can just step out and talk to the guys out there quietly, so thank you very much. So there's too much ladies and gentlemen. Political leader, Honorable Musa Hassan Belitie, representative of District Number Seven in Macam in front of Liberia, leaders of the Liberian community here present, fellow partisans of the Citizen Movement for Change. Today, I'm charged with giving you a brief history of the Citizen Movement for Change. The Citizen Movement for Change, CMC, is a dynamic political and civic movement established to unite meaningful reform and restore public confidence in leadership in Liberia. Officially founded and legally recognized in March of 2025, the CMC emerged from a coalition of patriotic Liberians, both within a country and across worldwide diaspora, who shared a common mission and that mission is that Liberia's transformation was driven by ordinary citizens who are committed to integrity, interpretability and accountability and mission-first leadership. From its inception, the movement distinguished itself as not just not a political party, but as a people-centered reform platform which is grounded in grassroots mobilization. Within just six months of its inception, of formation, the CMC collected a remarkable fifty thousand post-registered members, with strong presence across all fifty counties of Liberia, as well as amongst diaspora communities in the United States, Canada, Europe, and West Africa. The rhetoric reflects a national awakening, a rising demand for new leadership values, transparent governance, and a political structure that truly reflects the role of our people rather than the interests of political means. The founders of the CMC envisioned a movement that would change the structure, culture, political competency, and corruption that has burdened Liberia for decades. Mobilize citizen at community level to participate actively in shaping policy, developing policies, priorities, and leadership and accountability. To build and move generation of self-leaders committed to principles rather than political privilege. And also to unite Liberians at home and abroad on a shared mission of national renewal and progressive governance. What sets CMC apart is this bottom-up approach, empowering communities, ministering to citizens' voices, listening to citizens' voices, and allocating policies based on real needs and not political slogans. According to it, CMC is a movement of action, advocacy, and a grassroots empowerment with the long-term appreciation of rich, shabby Liberians' political culture ahead of the 2029 elections. More than just a political institution, CMC represents a new mindset. It calls to every Liberian, home and abroad, to arise, to participate, and become a vision of change for the betterment of our nation, Liberia, and its citizens. So thank you.
Thank you, Chester. And let me, I know like we should probably, um, those want me to do this, but I'd like to recognize the pastor of this church who is here celebrating with you guys. Pastor, I'd like to say welcome. So now let's, if you're out there, please come in, close the door, because we're about to start having some real serious discussion here this evening. Let me now welcome Mister Delores Shaw. She is the regional head of CMC to come in and do the introduction of the political leader of the Citizen Movement for Change, Mister Shaw.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Minnesota. Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, fellow partisans, it is my honor and distinct privilege to introduce to you a remarkable leader, a visionary entrepreneur, and a fearless advocate for change, Honorable Musa Hassan Belitie, the political leader of the Citizen Movement for Change. Honorable Belitie is not just your typical politician. He is a guiding force in both public and the private sectors. A man whose life has been rooted in integrity, innovation, and impact. He is not just a political leader, he is a solid movement. As the political leader for the Citizen Movement for Change, Honorable Belitie represents a bold new chapter in Liberia's political history. One defined by courage, integrity, innovation, and an unshakable belief in the power of the Liberian people and their power to shape their own destiny. A visionary leader and a results-driven reformer, Honorable Belitie has dedicated his life to championing good governance, inclusive development, and national unity. At a time when Liberia faces deep political and social and economic challenges, he offers not just promises, but a proven track record and a transformative agenda for real change. Before entering the political arena, Honorable Belitie distinguished himself as a titan of the industry and a pioneer in private and the private sectors development. Through his leadership of sermons, wealth, and gas, he created opportunities for Liberians to participate meaningfully in economic development and governance. His ventures in logistics and media, including the founding of Truth FM and Real TV, have not only created jobs, but also promoted transparency, civic dialogue, and accountability in the comfort of life. Now serving in the Fifty-Fifth National Legislature as the representative from Nema County's District Number Seven, Honorable Belitie has fallen to be one of the most principled and progressive lawmakers of his generation. He has authored and supported legislation to protect Liberian businesses, empower youth, and promote inclusive economic growth. Notably, his sponsorship of landmark amendment to the Liberian Aliens and National Re Law, he helped refine citizenship and the national programming in the country. When he served as the chairman for the Rule of Law Caucus during a very difficult and trying period of the National Liberian Legislature, he championed transparency, justice, and accountability, ensuring that all Liberians, that Liberia's laws serve all its people and not just a narrow interest. Honorable Belitie's leadership begins and ends with service. Through the Belitie Development Foundation, he has empowered youth and young people all around Liberia with education, entrepreneurial skills, and supported local farmers and uplifted communities both in urban and rural Liberia. His six-year legislative agenda focused on healthcare, education, infrastructure, agriculture, and job creation is a roadmap to Liberia's transformation. Rooted in a rich and inner faith background, Honorable Belitie embodies the values of tolerance, respect, and inclusion. His leadership style is democratic and people-centered, bringing together Liberians across ethnic, religious, and political lines to build a future grounded in shared values and common purpose. In his world, merit overrides randomness and collaboration drives change. What sets Mister Belitie apart is his independence, his entrepreneurial discipline, and his unwavering belief that Liberians must take ownership of their own future. He is not just a product of a political system. He is a product of hard work, vision, and resilience. In him, Liberia sees a new kind of leader, one who listens, who delivers, and who leads by example. Liberia stands out across roads. The old ways have failed, time has turned again. The future demands leadership, current capacity, and clarity of visions. Honorable Belitie offers exactly that. He is committed to building a purposeful, inclusive, and forward-looking Liberia. One where opportunities are shared, resources are protected, and every citizen can stake in the nation's progress. He stands for action over promises, substance over slogans, and service over self-evidence. So ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming to the stage our honorable guest, Honorable Musa Hassan Belitie. He's here for the moment in his true faith to help us to the South African people.
Please, please have a seat, please. Mister Chairman of the CMC Minnesota Chapter, Honorable Musa. Mister friend who has been very kind enough to move us around, see us, and show us a beautiful city. Did he? Um, a friend that I've known for over several years, someone that I know and who has appeared to join us on this journey. As our regional chair responsible for the West and the Midwest. Victoria, I think people prefer to begin with, oh, the better known one. Thank you for joining us. I want to take this time to also thank Mister Zulu Yamasawa. The man to give a lot and was quite enough today to be a lifetime. Well, Honorable CMC, I want to say thank you. Let me say a special thank you to the local chair of CMC, Mrs. Assine Ratchisip, who is busy coordinating the local affairs of CMC. We want to also say a very big thank you to the Chair of the CMC USA, Mrs. Chris Waugh, who is my here today, but we're happy that her heavy words has brought us where we are in the city. Thank you. I want to thank all of you for showing up, our local leadership, everybody that has made this possible for us, our team, the people of the district here, those who joined us on the event here, our leadership in and outside of the USA. I want to thank you to give us the opportunity to speak to our people, to answer questions about our goals, our vision for our area, and how we see a different path for a country that has the modern leadership in the last twelve years based on sympathy and celebrity. Sure that we can now get down to business and award leadership based on merit, based on qualification, and based on understanding of the function of the earth. I want to thank you for giving us the chance to speak to you today. I can say very little about the CMC now after the chairman and the regional head of CMC has taken. They give you our vision, they give you what we're here for, why we want to be different. Why do you want to be different? I just wanted my Liberians to give themselves the opportunity to make a choice of leadership and age of something else. For the last twelve years, you have elected leaders twice. And we should learn chances to leaders. No manifesto, no vision of one to expect, and why we need a country, no accountability. I think for us, that should be enough. It should be the time for us to go back to the point where leaders must be held accountable, where leaders should give the vision of the country. How is all the going to now as a country is clear? If you want to choose the leader in your country. The idea that, oh, this person we have, a good man, means our finance, a good, this, is not enough. That neither was having a spending of the economy, of the justice system, of the governance system. Otherwise, document presented by your delegates have no value. Your ability to review them, to make a final call, makes you the leader. If you don't have that quality, if you, Liberians, don't give yourself the opportunity to ask these leaders those questions, then you are setting up yourself for failure. I believe we are high on failure as a country. I believe it is time for us to choose leaders based on merit, to give account of themselves. Twenty twenty-nine, I believe that the United Party and the CDC would present a leader for their governance of our country. And at least give yourself the chance to ask the two questions. I mean, to give two answers to every question. If both of them tell you what they are going to do with education, when you give them the chance, they should be able to tell you why they do it the last time you gave them the chance, or both of them. I can't believe it. You are Google, and not really as a country, and as a host for us. You are presidents that don't even care who come back to you to just have a mere personality, to have a visit, to report it, to say something to you. I believe they have to start now. Just take them out as a country. You, especially you in the diaspora. You are in a country where democracy is everything and where whatever you lend it for now, the American people have the opportunity to ask questions to their leaders before they elect them. You cannot sit there, your culture of homaging is practicing democracy, and you cannot be a perpetrator of that. Hopefully, we're here to challenge those who want to be leader of our country. Why do you want to be leader? Now what needs, you want to achieve that? Celebrating is not a solution. We have learned that the highway, everything is not a solution. We've learned that the highway. Now it's time for us to choose leaders based on functional history of performance, whether you're doing it with an opportunity that you're getting, so that we can own the country for. So we're here tonight to listen to you, to allow you to ask those questions. Questions about me or this agency. I believe that if you are not ready to answer a question, then you're not ready to lead. And here, to tell you deep that. You can ask me any question. I am not here to take a question to ask. If you have a question about me, about the vision of our party, please ask me. I will not be swatted and I will not dodge any question. I am fully prepared to answer any questions because to be a leader, because to be a leader is to be accountable to you and is to be accountable to you. We can roll over as a country, six and four people. Simply because you end up receiving a check, you end up receiving a, or you end up receiving a. I am from Liberia. My father is from Liberia. My mother is from Liberia. I am a Ndeka. I am my father's son. My father is. I played no part in becoming who I am. I was not there, or my parents created me. I did not tell them what my choices are, and I cannot be irresponsible for who I am. There is not a prayer that I will be taken off. What I say about religion is culture. I was born onto a Muslim family. Someone will be here tonight, but won't go for Christian. If my father called you, you would be, you would be a Muslim today. If your father called you, if your father called you, I would be a Christian. We play very little role in the religion we choose to become. We were born into our religions. That's very funny. It is witness for politicians to stop here based on religion. Where I'm from, that I'm across by the line, where the people of this district in Liberia, overland, defined separate from the epic center of the Liberian civil war, where people were killed. People, especially from my tribe, were killed. Where the people of that district, who are being afraid to say they will vote for him, is going to revenge. They had genuine reason to be afraid. And they chose progress, development, transparency over fear. You can say whatever you want to say. I am proud of mine. I am from the part of Liberia where the civilians is the boy of the day. I am happy to contribute to the diversity of my country. And I believe that through us, Liberians will finally prepare itself for a leadership accountable to that part of Liberia. And we are prepared to provide a leadership. You take your questions from the monitor. You're ready. Who is, who is free, this is real. Who's? Okay, so the way we're going to do it, we have a musical selection. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, this is the next game. Our opponent, Musa Hassan Beratik. Okay, so what we're doing now, we have our musical selection. Just a little bit support into the room while we readjust ourselves for the question and answer here. As you can see, Honorable Bilalie is already ready to answer your question by. So I hope you have your questions jotted down or ready to ask your questions. So we have three microphones. So the way we're going to do it, so if you have a question for Honorable Bilalie, you come to the microphone. Honorable Bilalie will come back here or... Would you like to move around? Like, want to move around to ask the question one by one? Okay, so, but you will, you will come to one of the three microphones with your question, and then he will answer your question. So we will take three questions at a time. Thank you. So right now, we have a musical selection, and then we'll move into the question and answer phase of the program. So we will take three questions at a time. Thank you. So right now, we have a musical selection. And then we'll move into the question and answer phase of the program. What?
That's a bright light.
So if you want to join the CFC, it's pure freedom of movement. Please step outside there with registration going on. We are about to start the second phase of program. So please take a seat, Cyrus.
Right here.
Please bring your mobility back. But we'll be trying to make sure. Alright. Yo, we're in a lot of glory, not a lot of science. We're all in the picture with our ability. But this powerful inclusion message that you just delivered. You need to ask this question. There are a lot of people who are concerned, who are in question, who would like to know about the CFC. This is where you will get a lot of answers. So don't worry about it. Our mobility is prepared, ready. You can put Minnesota because you know the power that Minnesota has. And you know the dividend. Any political party in Liberia, the dividend that will be accrued then by a person from Liberia means Minnesota. Liberia, 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 Minnesota. So I'd like to say thanks to the CFC, to the leadership, brother Ado, sister Shaq, and my good old sister, Mrs. Sendulo Zulu, for the leadership here in the great state of Minnesota. So now, if you have questions for our mobility, questions pertaining to the CFC, or any question for our member, he is ready and prepared to answer the question. So please step up to the microphone. So just just step up to the microphone, one at a time, right? Okay. So the former chair of the Liberian community here in Minnesota, the Honorable Ibrahim Ba, has the first question. So, Honorable Ba. Please be quiet, you have been standing. So we take two questions and the Honorable will answer. So please be quiet, please turn off your cell phone, put on vibrator, because this is one of the most critical time of the program, right? Because we would like to hear from the CFC leadership, from the CFC political leader. So this is your opportunity. Honorable Ba, you have the first question.
Thank you, Honorable Musa Hassan Beres. Uh thank you, this is Honorable Musa Hassan Beres. So my first question. You have various political parties in Liberia. And you are many members of some of those political parties. Why now you decided to find your own political party, not to force ahead with a lot of political parties, to carry the same message that you just stated here today? Why the rationale behind you finding your own political party? That one, two. Is there a political party of money? Or is it a political party that being good for everybody? And happily, would the political party still be standing up? Because we have seen a lot of political parties being criticized by one individual because he or she has the money. And I believe the political party, the party that are doing here, are existing. Is that the truth? Or you have different motives beyond creating this political party?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Honorable Ba. Um please let us ask one question and keep it short. It may not be shot to allow you to ask two questions. But the rest of you, you will ask one question. And then you go to the next microphone and ask another question from there. Okay, and please keep it as short as possible, right? So we take one question from you and then you may allow our ability to answer.
Thank you so much. First of all, on this Buddhist Harris, I feel from time to time this struggle for a year in my front end, I was a candidate who is going to die. I work with Musa Beres, the party yes, over the year, as company. I would say good to you for my political party. My question here to you is the, how are you, when you tell them they have seen me, when you tell our version in the year, and today you are going to establish another party? Do you still have faith with the CEC, the ANC, the CBP, the other parties? Where can we say we're the CFC? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so now, please be quiet. Please allow us to give our ability, they are contributing the answer to the three questions that we just asked. Honorable Beres.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um I think the three question have, they all have similarities. Um the CFC is a result of the fact that we re-then and come to, we live in a party activity in Liberia. The United Party and the uh CEC have ruled Liberia for twenty years. Uh we are not seeing any direction. Uh when I became a legislator, I sincerely thought that I would have used the that ground, having read the constitution, and I've seen that the real power of the state lies in the legislature. Uh unfortunately, when I went there, I realized that actually, in a definition, lies by US power. Uh therefore, it cannot be used to solve like this problem. It is different. And stay there, try as I did, there is a catch of it. You will not allow you to move. You are to uproot and system. You have to change it. You have to have, you have to launch a revolution from a grassroots. And about the people to elect competent, credible people to go in there, use the power of the constitution and really reform to the country. Uh why not join the other parties? Unfortunately, I cannot. Uh they are stuck in their ways. They are pre-designed, or they have no capacity to change. They are very independent. I've been ruling the country for twenty years. If you ask over there today, all of them say, as much as the country is struggling, as much as like Liberia is struggling, we'll keep the time. These two parties continue to say, they have a best solution following in there. In my mind, it means that they have no solution, right? Starting a new one with a vision of all women achieving our duty. With a contract for our duty, with an understanding of doing everything differently. How we select our officials, how we attach our issues, how we run our campaign, and most importantly, we want to do it differently. We don't believe that every day you should show, you should give us the, okay, okay, okay. You should show them that you can do for them. Why don't you care? So that they can have your confidence to give you power. United Party, the CEC, tell about you. And I think turning to them for a solution for our country is a mistake. And I believe that makes me. So that's our house. Um CFC is now, believing to understand that evening, when we are in Minnesota, the chairman is here, he tells, they operate immediately. They may allow us to interfere with the function because the system doesn't allow that. We are very independent, we are democratic, uh but we discipline. We stick to the rules, we do our in-house training, we build family so that we can separate, uh we solve any incident. So the fact that you see us in Korea, it doesn't mean that we disagree. We have a way of dealing with this. So seeing us together should not set a standard, as a woman, it is not. I came to the job and you realize that it's not a woman's party. And I, I don't have a link with this issue. I've always not believed that it is about the year of president. And I didn't believe that in twenty seventeen. I didn't believe that in twenty twenty. And that doesn't make me very suspicious. And the fact that I found this party and we are moving towards the United States, I accept that CFC will have no business to taking this party, to head off this party, that in the framework of this mission. They are not the largest party. It's not just a play, United Party and CEC are not the largest party in Liberia. The largest party are the two million people who are not voting. We have found the fact within Liberia, the number of people that voted combined for the United Party and the CEC is one point four million. They are assuming that there is another one point five million people that have not reached the age. There are two million that we will focus on. And so they are not the majority. The majority, the majority is sitting down, the majority has been disappointed and disillusioned, and the majority needs a new nation. As long as we believe that these two parties are our solution, only one point five million will decide the future of this country. They will only take a recourse, those people will rise up and they will be the majority. Thank you. And then the ANC, our honourable ANC, our squad was, our chairman of the CBP, before I became the running party chairman, CBP were following for me. I am now from CBP. I became chairman of CBP of the system. And unfortunately, uh the ANC, I mean the CBP, ended April first, twenty twenty four. And obviously, I had lost interest in the United Party. Unfortunately, the party now is dominated by the United Party and they are most experienced. And I don't have a number of, I believe in, I don't know if this is now, I don't know the future and the direction of the United Party at this point. I thought it was appropriate and prompt that we found a party that will give in this country a new voice and a new foundation.
Thank you. Alright, so we will take the question from you and then a question from you. Once again, please turn off your phones. Please, please, don't be having side conversations around. You need to hear out of our here to listen to and hear from our ability. So please respect them for coming, taking the time to come here to hear. So let's please be quiet and listen to the questions and the answers. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, my name is Jerome Bonfara. Uh I'm from Bonkantje and I live in Ziyang South Bend. Yeah, I think this is the, I'm from France. Two men were in battle, so I'm happy to be here. To help us in something, anything. In your CFC. Uh the brother there read from what was reading, I heard that the CFC brings a new mindset. Uh there is something in our country like Liberia that has to do with the values of qualities. And the values of qualities is the goal. Trial. God has to put this man, he's a pastor man, and I'm a pastor man, I will do for him. Oh, this man is a real man, and he's not the rightful choice for this country. And also religion. He is a Buddhist, he cannot be now president for this country. So anyway, that's based on some, like I said, uh we play a fair little role in becoming or expecting our religion. So my question to you here, Mr. Beres, is how are you going to handle these issues? In our country like Liberia, when you become the president?
Thank you. Put the question to me.
Yeah. Mine is very simple. Mine is the time of the deep. Uh so basically, I would just like to ask you a question. What actually distinguished, why do you distinguish me from the rest of our tradition?
Thank you. Um the issue of tribalism is an attempt to overlook us. Those of you that are younger, you see the world differently. Unfortunately, most of the time, when we leave America and go back to Liberia, once we cross the Atlantic Ocean, the polar ice will come at us. We have to overcome that. Uh I came here and I saw a lot in the last two, three days in the summer. You can highly recognize tribe here, you can highly recognize religion among our Liberians. Uh you, it is unbelievable how, you know, you are built and completed purely on a basis of why you are in common. For us at CFC, we have no place for tribalism. For us at CMC, we have no place for tribalism. We look at the structure, we operate each other. We, yes, we do give preference to women in the shape. We do that. We are heavily invested in the power of women. As you can see, our diaspora is full of women, male, female power. And we believe in that. And we, so we are deliberately promoting women in the shape. Or we have to try. There is no place in our party. We don't believe in it. And unless we get rid of it, we'll be planted and continue to choose leaders who don't make any sense of competition. Because they feel that, you know, you are only going to vote up for them because they don't use you as a protection against oppression. So we, we are not looking for tribalism. You need to look out for. You need to prepare to have tribe. You don't have to answer the question of tribe in CMC. You can say, you go online. And you want to join the party, which you can do now. All you have to do, you have to just see a CMC that I be that talk. If you, if you do it now, you go online, you get there, you ask some basic questions. If you are in the diaspora, you may still come to your country, play at the address. Just a click, okay, oh, do I remember? Nothing. We are blind to what they would practice or what they mention. We don't ask people question that they have nothing to avoid. They are absolutely not going to play with it. So tribe is not one of the things that we will not even come in. There is not a issue for us or not, the, with that. The second question was.
What sets you apart?
A lot. Let me, let me introduce, you know, because leadership is by something. As a one. As a political leader of CMC, I believe in transparency. I have challenged the whole government to be transparent. And they are still to be transparent. I'm proud to say I'm the only official in Nigeria that have completely declared and published my assets. None of them have done so. So five years. People in the United Party, the opposition, let me ask. And on the knee is always the earth. The only voice that stands against them is me. And yet they are not. So for me, they give their own money, so I'll let them do that. But. And I'm pushing that we. Order the legislature. I believe if we order the legislature, most people who stand in for the audacity to want to be leaders of this country will not have the face to do so. Everyone of them has had, they all enriched themselves through leadership. You saw in the importance of our debt. The duty to governments, 75 million dollar bogus debt. 75 million dollar bogus debt. The legislature consol 372 million United States dollar between 2018 and 2023 with no accountability. I have seen central bank statement where cash withdrawal of 1 million, 1.5 million, 700,000, 800,000 to the legislature. What could be? So I'm different from them and I'm proud to say that. And I challenge them to be like me. I challenge them to be transparent. And I am hoping to end the form of audit or scrutiny, public scrutiny. I know one again, the way is government. The government will try to muddle my business because they cannot muddle this up. They have nothing against me. I work for every time that I spend. I want half rate. I take care of the family, I take care of my people. I help. It's the same thing that I can help. I manage, give you credit, and I do, I defy them to be like me. So if you want to, if you want to challenge me, the first thing I will tell you, declare my asset and publish it throughout the state of. Or in that, we are not the same. All right. The voice of the honorable Representative Hassan Hassan Benet. So what would you now, let me just remind you. If you would like to join this organization, the registration is in the vestibule here. So you can just go out there and you can register. If you're interested in learning more about the CMC, you can do that. You also have T-shirts. And before you leave here today, you'll get some food out there. Not to eat in a sanctuary, but you will take that home with you, okay? So in the meantime, just hang tight. We'll get to you, we'll get to more questions because we are just getting started, right? We're just getting started now. Our ability, I have a question for you. You talked about discouraging tribalism. And it starts from your party, CMC, not having a form that asks for someone to try or someone to legislate. You as a law maker, because that, that, that issue that is pervasive, pervasive throughout the government. A lot of forms, people who compete for asking for trial and asking for legislation. So what kind of legislation can you put forth to discourage that practice? Here in the US, you know that. There's no family can compete here where you have to feel like a trial. So what can you do to help to discourage that? Number one, again, the next question, please. The next question is, can you describe your emblem? The series, what does this mean? May I see three individuals here with their hands around. The one who's there with their hands around. Can you please explain to us and tell us what does this mean? What does this emblem mean? What does it signify? So, so I'll ask a question to the moderator now. Hassan was just trying for that, he's going to be some president. One issue of what can I do about, about forms and quality? As chairman of, when I was chairman of the maintenance security committee, I prepared to give a report to the national legislature. Because I saw one time the police, you know, when there is a crime. I mean, it's, it's that. And the question that they change it. At the time I was chairman, it was changed. I don't know whether it's still, you know, yeah. I also believe that we should have got anti-traveling law. That we bar government agencies from asking questions about travel. And it is one of the things that the CMC is not opposed. Just as we've done to remove discrimination against members of the diaspora. There is a law on the ground that says that when you obtain passport for another country, you lose your citizenship like in the United. In 2020, they modified it to say, okay, you don't lose your citizenship, but you can run for office. The first thing I did when I became governor is to push and successfully pass the law in the lower house that completely removed the restriction on Africans. And that you and your children are automatically citizen. The title of the law is once a Nigerian, always a Nigerian. And that our children, your children, once you are a Nigerian, owning a passport, she has to thank you for coming to become president of Nigeria, to become representative. As it stands now, with an African passport, you are not qualified unless you now to have the right to ask the citizenship to run as representative or to be the minister in the government. Thankfully, I've heard a good time, making commitment at the diaspora conference that she fully support that. Therefore, we hope that she can hold that bill. She will fully houseware it in a passage so that every Nigerian will have the opportunity. That is instead was removing tribalism from our home. We are discriminating against you people because you left Nigeria. Because they are not providing the resources you want to do.
Thank you.
Without me, without me, there is no Nigerian economy today. Fifty percent of the foreign exchange that the company uses in the dentist and pharmacy room. And it's okay to take your money. It is okay to receive money from you to support family. But it is not okay for you to come and go and run for your own citizenship. And, and, and this is just, these are just one of, you know, few things that we're doing. Our symbol is yellow. Yellow is a beauty, a new beginning. It is a sequence of the depression for all who have failed. Those three individuals represent men, women, and the youth. And they, they are the basis of our society and our world. So we know that there are three categories of people who are global. So we have those three categories. Our vision coil. What we have translated in the use of four colors, our vision coil is yellow. And if you go and define yellow, it would be fascinating to see that. Yellow means different. Yellow means something new. Yellow means a new beginning. Yellow means a new direction. Yellow means hope. And yellow means a brighter future. All right, so let's take two questions from here, two questions from there. For one prepared to. Yeah, we'll take, we'll take two from here. Then two from there and then, and then we'll take a break after. One of the prepared to answer the question, number seven. All right, so two from here and then two from there. But please make it short and to the point. Start from here.
My name is Mr. Hassan Hassan Benet. A quite a few Russians, United Party and that of the CDC, they are asking me here. They just need to hear it. Second, what's happened, what's happened? Dogu. When Dogu said that you, when the President Hassan Benet said, I need to pass it on to China. And that is the Afro Party and Colonel, um, 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 Karen, Karen. What do you have to say concerning those allegations that when Dogu made few days ago in OK FM studio concerning you directly? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Again, welcome to our, uh, here today. My name is Maurice, from this, from Bonk County. The moderator just said, I have two questions about who we target as we want. What it is, we are ready for you guys, it's what it is. You said, I have a team here, although we are scared, yes. So the reason is that you and CMC or CDC did not agree because you told them that these people in there will walk out of there or what. So that tomorrow, I said, we will propose. And said, as a dog, they don't like you know. I'm putting to you this year, maybe this year, to ask this thing. And then they ask you to do the wrong, you have to move. And, uh, uh, we all signed up. The government, the mentor who you tell, doing it where somehow money is a good time. So do you have any updates for us or that when we talk to the manager, we say, yeah?
Thank you. So we'll take, take two more questions from here. I put you on the top, I have prepared this list, that's why. So if you'd like to get to you. So take one question from here, one question from, from your mind.
My name is making great from Grand County. Mister Ben, I have watched couple of you on generally talking about the intention of mission for the country when you have to respond to any of these questions. One, I actually contest the term to the national presidential election of Nigeria as a standard, uh, standard, uh, A of CMC. Number two is, why have sponsors and representatives, much of the people?
Thank you. We can provide you.
Thank you very much. Our, our United General, I'm glad to ask this major question. I come here to take change for the working of our people. I went to the yard, went on working, I'm from, I'm from San Diego, San Diego. They made it so hard to. So you can see a man, if they were supposed to meet, it would be capital. I talked to your partner, said, maybe I will sit, tell you in this problem, I know. You are using your own money, these are your guys who are the goal. Yes, you are guys who are there. They are very rich, they are giving us, many cars, one bottle. They are trying to sell the beer, you know, he is naive from a party. To sit there, not to sit, the guy in the corner, to tell my brother and friend, thank you very much.
Thank you. So what we do now, let's save, let's save our mobility the opportunity for answer those three questions and one comment. And then we'll take a quick break, a little interval music, and then we'll come back. So, uh, I want your ability, I need to drink some water, uh, relax, relax. Come back and answer more questions. So our ability, uh, we, yeah, forget to add. Thank you. So, um, yes, I accept the, the corrections. I think more. I think, yeah. You are winning now. Say, I don't say, yeah, I'm winning now. So ninety one, nine, ninety years now, um, no. Um, I've seen myself. The opportunity you have given me to speak to you after your appearance, I think there will be a worst of that time and that meaningful period to answer a question from someone who, by their mere representation, is a bottom man for. So I think I have a very clean and thorough account in Nigeria. And I repeat, I will never, I will never ever bear my, any of you. One of the people that I speak to every day in, like, what it is, is Mr. Senator Amara. We have excellent relationship. I'm not aware of any political decision that I've made before. Without having to sit with Senator, who is one of the best in our community to live in. I don't try to destroy the people. I don't attempt that, but trying that, um, I can not be mine. Oh, I didn't. It doesn't make sense. That come in there who has said what we tell them, that my tribe keep the way for, I mean, I have friends in Abu, I have relatives in Abu. My nephew is a political leader of Abu. My uncle is the chairman of Abu. I have, on so many occasions, contributed to work in Abu. And it is not in my character to act myself with that of pity. There's absolutely no doubt is there? I will not answer it if you come from somewhere else. But you can judge it if you come from Doguwa. You should be judged. So I, I, I don't think, I, I, I feel like if you have other question, you would have that question, you know, a bear less on my, on my character. There are things I need to yourself, you know, whatever that, I am against Abu. I will again to the party, I think you are only out for the money. And who will change that? But I, I'm not against CDC. I'm not against CDC, but I believe that CDC have had an opportunity to rule the country and, uh, they did not get a good outcome of themselves. But to say that I have personal, if I don't, I don't personally have qualities. I have families, I have friends, I have brothers, sisters in Abu. I talk to a political leader of Abu all the time, like I said, and it's a, you know, people. So if you ask them, they will go on to everything I'm telling you. They necessarily will not believe Doguwa. Doguwa is an embarrassment to the humanity. Uh, he is somewhat of a form of us as a country. He's a, he's an instrument of our, he's, uh, he's something that we are ashamed of as the people of the humanity. Uh, a man who used their identity or their money just to get help out. You know, I think how gradually the people give credit to that thing. You know, and so honestly, I'm losing my mind trying to be very, very, because anything does not belong to this forum. This forum is too important. Very, that was a bad question. Yes, somebody asked, don't read the handbag, don't, don't stand. You know, it's good to build reputation, I'm glad. I have a reputation, but I will, and anyone can forget. Well, I say I'll do it, I'll do it. Maybe, maybe, maybe you, you, you can lift us on, you know, what, what we talk, we do. To understand of me, uh, Peter, we join the assessment, uh, the, from, uh, uh, for now, we have a small bridge, uh, we jump on the assessment. We put those bridges, we connect, uh, to stand, we connect Nima Kanti. Nima is. The same, the same charity, charity, it begins at home. And nobody, if I go out there doing all kind of thing in my backyard, Nima Kanti. So people will face, and we will face Nima. We face Nima, and we win in success to the mind, to make a choice, pay his own, our stewardship, not make a trial. And only issue of whether or not we running guests, unless my party say no, but personally, my very decision, I will be the tickets of the CDC who can turn it around.
All right, I know, uh, I want to take, just all respect, yes. I want to take this one as Doguwa, the gentleman, you guys will ask next. Let Doguwa, I'm sorry, say, you know, no, 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 no. No, so let Doguwa, so let, let, let Doguwa ask the question. We take a quick break, then we'll come back. It just got, it just got a difference to me. To the other things, yes.
I want, I want everybody to listen to me attentively. I just want you.
I want to speak.
I want to speak in the back. Yes. Y'all listen. We have a history in Liberia that is unknown. Now, you young people don't know about that history. Out for the era in Liberia, even going from all the countries, a very historical era. And I want you all to be aware of that era. And I'm going to use the CMC to expose that era to the world. Out for the era in Liberia called Tala, right by Lake Piso. That's where the American soldiers and British soldiers settled during World War II to fight Hitler. Most of you don't know it, but because of the underdevelopment and if they are neglected that era, it is not known. In Ghana, they have a similar place, place there, where the slave trade went through and when it achieved. Ghanaians are making millions of dollars from that historical place where the slave trade went through. But Liberia, we are ignoring it. So that place called Tala is where the American soldiers and British soldiers settled during World War II to fight Hitler. I have met Americans here that have great parents live in our place in our country called Talalito. So I don't want to urge the CMC to, Mr. Musa Betele, I will invite you to Tala and get the CMC land in Tala, that you all will expose that place to the Americans. I want Americans to leave from here and go there for weekends and even pay hotels and motel by that lake, but being that it's not accessible. So Americans can go there, that's all I want to say to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, this is very good job, you have full responsibility, so I want to be, um, thank you. We will, we will, we will look at it and as soon as I get back home, I would like to visit that place. We set a team there, I promise you, and we'll send pictures so that we can see what we get through there, then we can visit of tourism.
Thanks.
All right, so we take a quick break and a short musical interlude. We'll come back with more questions. Once again, thank you all, thanks for meeting there with the CMC. And at the end, I want to appreciate the time. Thank you.
All right.
All right, please, please come, please come in, please come in, so we can finalize this. It's, it's the last portion of the Q and A. So please, please come in, did you see?
Mr. Adam, will you take your seat?
Don't take my.
Why, why, please, yeah? Yes.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, look at. I know what you're.
Please, please, please.
You know, you're a little bit, you're not smiling, you're like, I know you're tired, you see? You're going to recognize.
Chester. Please tell the folks, can you take your seats or grab the chair?
Yes. No, no, my WhatsApp, the much. I don't know my WhatsApp, I always a loser. Let's see my text right now.
How are you?
Look, I, you know why we take the tarot?
Ah, that's why I said, but they are okay, yeah. I didn't mind the man, he said. The ready. Yep. Forever, he's a.
So, I'm going to.
Oh, damn it.
Would have forebrought something about to after the church. And they're not even here, eh? Because now we're for here. You say what time here? Your best is quick. No, no. After my. I want, I want to pick a chairman package. Event, yeah, quick. Sarus, what's up, huh? How my girl doing?
There should be six or five. Ah, come in, let me tell our god of focus.
Hey, Chester.
We pray.
Chester.
We pray.
Chester.
We do train.
Leave for Cyrus on the schedule for the interview. Interview, get to interview the chief. He's still a resident.
Alright, please take your seats. Alright. Go there. Chester. Please come in and discuss. Got to tell you how you drove me. I'm happy as I give me. You have done and changed my whole world. My bad sadness, hello, hello. What a wonder, what a. So amazing to be loved. I love you to the moon and sky above. Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, 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 I go. And it's so amazing, amazing. I can sense forever, forever. No matter long, we remember. But we not amazing, girl. Please come in, please. And also, I think, so, I think, I think. Yes, we hope. We have been asking, I'm amazing, girl. I see, I know, I see, no. Uh, sure. Maybe. What a wonder, you. It's so amazing to be loved. I love you to the moon and sky above. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's so amazing to be loved. I love you to the moon and sky. Last.
Okay. It's a boss. It's a boss. It's a boss.
Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Harris. Okay, so we're now, okay, we're now the, um, final phase of the program. But thanks for your patience and for working with us. Folks have to get out here and, um, take a little break, use the restroom and all of that. So we're now, we're back. Now, this is the rapid fire moment. So we're just gonna take as many questions as possible. And we will start from you. So go ahead.
Yes, my name is Nkandla Oliyi. A very easy name. You know, I understand we are limited to only one question only. Or else I will go to add a question.
No, you just one question. Yeah, I have one question only.
Okay, so, let me go straight into my question. Um, our ability, we, we have been around here for a little while in the United States. We see politicians come here and represent us and get our support. Even though we may not have the power to cast vote. But we can influence family members and friends back home. Something we have been doing and giving power to other politicians. And we have been tested to be part of the process practically where we can cast votes. So would you know what effort your office is making to give us power in terms of absentee vote?
Thank you. Mr. Kamara.
Alright, my name is Yadeh Kamara. So I just want to thank you for taking this opportunity, so, and, uh, having this kind of time with me. Right, this is one very important special day. We had an opportunity to talk to all leaders of people that we know. I could have a leadership test question for you. And, uh, leadership is about character. And character has, uh, the way we respond and actually take many processes. Says a lot about how we're going to be and what we're going to do, we're going to be. So my question here is, uh, back in September, there was an international training. Your global cheerlead, uh, I told Francine, which my brother, I think she's very, very bright, she's smart. And Jackie, alright? As a leader, how do you not have that kind of situation? Where they're in a bushy, how, how you will have to deal with that situation so that, you know, it doesn't look like she was aggressive or something like that?
Thank you. And then, come to you.
Hi, our ability. My name is Emo from Ascere, name of my name. Quick question. As a political leader of the CMC, will you recommend and support a limited energy for writing, as you said? Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll take the last one for you. We'll come back to you all there, just a four, definitely, absolutely. You go ahead.
Greetings to you, my name is Bete, my name is Omuya, Dwee. From Lofah County, uh, Department of Energy District. So, on behalf of Emo's family, I want to tell you thank you. For the great job, uh, that you honor taking in quality bowling. You talk to few machines who got the toll. Make our goals and I would like for others to join me, those that got help in mind. Those that see unity, not hate, to tell you thank you. So, my question to you here is that the name Muslima Bledet is not strange to I believe anymore. This thing, I remember since the day of Elie Tousin Salib. This is Muslima Bledet, the call of the golden son of Madame Elie Tousin Salib. So with that weekend, with that good attitude that he had probably that I've gained, close to Elie Tousin Salib. You did well when I was, when I was there. I see, and saw our opportunity that is created for young men today. So my concern have to do with Liberia, the youth, the youth that have been, um, disturbed or their future. We don't see how they can go away from, um, this kind of condition, they see themselves in. When we see images everywhere, where you see a lot of drugs everywhere and then these are the future for Liberia. So we come back to where Elie took it from and know the sorrow that can anything in it. So what is your party going to tackle this problem in the Liberians where you have to make the president for Liberia? These are our concern. And how going to go back home?
Thank you. You know what you said first, on behalf of me and my family that played on this, that, that maybe, you know, period, time, that was, that was my experience. But you realize that, that's why, that's why, that's why, it's also, like, also need some donation, you know, so. Yeah, they took donation to, but, alright, your ability, go ahead. Thank you.
Um, before I start, let me just use this, uh, occasion to, I recognize something just now. And it touched my heart. Um, let me tell, the pastor of this church, thank you. Um, there was a moment where the Muslims were looking for place to pray. And not only did she give me space, she opened her office. And my readers, my readers, as we penetrate from these level of tolerance. I hope that this will teach us to understand that this is what we need to do and transform our culture. And then, uh, the hope, we want to pray somebody has one bill, a sponsor one bill, which is a, um, born, uh, once in Liberia, always in Liberia bill. That bill does not deal with the discrimination issue. Uh, it was to protect our job and stop setting categories for people coming to our country to work. Uh, and protect all the jobs you see in their minds, like, think that a brave person has to do when that day is passed. It will give thousands of jobs to Liberians because there will be a proficient on our law. Uh, prevents the government from allowing certain foreigner coming to our country to work. Because that, Islam in Liberia, droughts, colds, uh, all kinds of work are being, you know, inputting out. While the Brit continue to, you know, to travel in your country. This will deal that. We have no bills coming, we have no bill coming for the reduction in the terming, which we are going to submit before the end of this year. To call for the reduction in the terming of, uh, electoral official, four year representative, four year president, and senior. Senator, we got to go to the Tusham. They, they request the amendment to our constitution. And that will do under the same resolution to increase the if, uh, uh, limit for justices, uh, in our system. Our system is getting, uh, direct of, uh, well qualified judges. Because as you can see, uh, we're getting younger every day. So seventy-five is going over a very old age. And that we're losing our competent, you know, Lucy, the, the, the chief justice, uh, that just passed, clearly was top one. We are going to fix the same thing in four years, if we don't, uh, uh, change the law, we're going to remove this chief justice as well. And it makes the justice system weak because every three years, the president of Liberia will have a chance to change your job. And elect a chief justice. That will have an impact in our justice delivery system. Hopefully we can, we can change that. In the, in the power to link with the vote. Uh, the CMC is going to, uh, propose a changes in the election law. The right of argument to vote is constitutional right. It, it has been removed from the election law. That is one of the biggest, it's not a second. You are guaranteed your right to vote by the constitution of your, of your society. We're putting a, an amendment, both of amendment to the election law. I will make sure that countries that have made, made the ballot system will be allowed to process a human vote. Guess what? The last election vote is decided by less than twenty-five thousand people. According to the United States law, they say there, there are between three hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand Liberians in America. Do you know what you can do? You will be the one to decide who gets elected. CMC is very powerful. We're going to fight, it's a tough fight because there are a system in Liberia would fight against you. Uh, join us, stay with us, so that together, we can reach that that day is passed. So that every Liberian will have your right to vote, where there will be a Liberian for that. Um, uh, we also have only issue of, um, that difference in, in Jackie. I believe that, um, Jackie was an agent provocateur. She provoked that difference in, it was deliberate. It is a unique part of tactics. Uh, it was an intent to provoke her. Uh, and I believe that this was a plot. I didn't say that, like we have said, uh, sometimes it's good to expose people when they provoke you rather than responding to them. I would have ignored her and allow her to continue to expose herself. But we, we, uh, we, we, we make our position clear on that. But we stand, we run our chair and, and the CMC, they're a mission. And it is why it is with their plan. Um, if you make a, this is saying, um, first, CMC is very clever. We have no intention of supporting anyone outside of our party. Obviously, the party has a policy that will encourage female to be uh, uh, president. I think with the level of female power, you can see, when female are, uh, when they are, when they, uh, primarily have the the two hand of hand, or you have to be part of the party first. We are not going to take female outside and come and overrun our party system. But if female join our party, that female has fair good chance, you know, that was what we just said, but on the CMC ticket, and first time. Um, only issue of, you know, Elie Boitjia, I think he, he was just a passage statement, so I'll jump to that pass. Um, on the youth, um, we nothing in Liberia, no ground has been more heinous than the ground that uses your people in Liberia. There is no system in place to fight on Liberia. What we're doing is to victimize the victims. We are arresting young people, we're jailing them, they are dying on the street, but who brings it from the country? Nobody is being arrested. How can you take advantage of customers? Nobody is being arrested. So, there has to be complacency within the system. That is what we believe in. As president of Liberia, we will also draw enforcement for a superior of time when they can clean up our system. We will come outside of Liberia and tackle the professional, better professional that are outside of Liberia that have learned, uh, speaker quality law enforcement, especially in drug, uh, you know, fighting against this. We will specifically, uh, request governments, especially the US government, to help us to put a system that will deal with drug trafficking. We have nothing, we have no system, nothing to detect drug, nothing. All we have, we see the general of the drug, we arrest them, we jail them, we take the drug from them, put it somewhere else, and sell it to the next victim. That's what's going on in our country, or let that happen. You know, I believe today, there is nothing in Liberia has to ask the, to fight for. This, this, this man today, ask for foreign assistance for a period of two years and then within that two years, bring on lead, a new legion of professionals to fight for and declare a national emergency against any qualifying of this drug. If we don't do that, leave me. There is no threat against the system of our country as related to the threat drug poses to our, to the system of our society. So, we have to be serious about it. We have to, we have four, five regions in the country. We have to put anything less than fifty million, the minimum fifty million to build at five, uh, or we have to set up a, that is, part of our team, at least two thousand to five thousand people. Today in Liberia, one, now, five in every twenty-five U in Liberia has been affected by drugs. That is on the exponential increase. Which mean in two years, have faculty ten in society. We face a threat. In twenty twenty-three, in the middle of the election time, they, they, we called it Zobo, had an opera city that lasted for like two hours, but it don't move their place there. They just decided to go on around it, the entire city, one police unit. Someone there, he killed, which is not right, which is wrong, but they tell you to take your face. And so, for us, the first decision I will take, that decision against the drug over there, and I will be to declare a national emergency. And this behind the currently, and households, our fight against the drug, on there we are shown, we have the capacity to do ourselves. Um, um, yeah, that is a job. So, for your people, there's only one way to secure the future of your people, and that is medication. And there's only one way to educate them, that is to provide free education. The legislature to pass a tax, to take the money yourself, the government, the executive, the legislature, the entire system consume over two hundred million dollars in Google, do the free, they goes, every year. Our government will stack all of that. If you are a volunteer as a local official, the next day you will receive a less plate and then you can go to the car dealership, take your salary and pay car bill and drive your car. And for that money, you will be able to buy the other good work. So that the next job, that does not even have a person, can have a person. So that the woman that cannot even walk to go to deliver, can have the opportunity to be torn and up and led to be delivered. We will deliver a different Liberia. The Liberia we have today is a Liberia where the leaders have been underboring. They don't feed any attention. They did hear this few days, where members of my house, my company discussing the possibility of one point five million dollars to buy people for their keepers' cars. Did you hear that? I mean, that is outrageous. And that they're not on the horse, we're put a strategy. We're making enough money, the house of representatives cumulatively makes my district a thousand dollars a month. In a country that is strong, on the technical responsibility of all. And that money is enough to buy capital for keepers' cars, to buy capital for public utility. And they have the capacity to discuss the possibility. Unfortunately, this is significant, this is a unique factor of it. That's why they are disorganized. Top of the stage, you know, and I'm done. Yes, our politician, I'm here to throw chat and my opponent. But from last year, when the Sukkum could took place, but people of them today, there have never been a single government official that have here accountable. Please prove me wrong, why we need you? Now, a single government official have been come in the house to be their accountable. Accountability in the legislature has gone. Nothing is there anymore. A speaker, a speaker is a speaker, but once they do think, it is clear that everything put in there, they thought everything put in there, so he cannot find his masters. And therefore, accountability transparency in our system has raised, has gone. And to, to deal with that, as a people, there's only one way. And that one way is to truth the telling. If you look on that telling, you will see the CMC there.
Thank you. Alright, let's uh, take, um, let's uh, can your question, I will answer first.
Uh, just one question.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna go, thank you so much for why you take it much. Ta, or in my country, we better rich, out of God, we not very able. And I remember during the war, I went to my hometown in Bay, and we crossed our river. It was so fearful to cross in a kiln. But, few years ago, when we did a road breaking, I said, ah, what are you gonna do? A politician may just say something is on to you, but for you to complete that bridge, single intellect, that one is still here today, you say, oh, I'm so grateful, and take it for what's.
Thank you.
Good thing, so.
Thank you. Very quiet.
I believe, my name is Alvin, I have just one question. But if I ask this question, I'm gonna say, thank you so much for something you did, uh, for the commitment through me, twelve years ago. I was just going down upon my graduation and think back, about working with the war bank, uh, MCC. So, I opened a little computer school in the community in general time, because most of our brothers and sisters didn't know, basically, computer skills, so it's all happened. And then, I sent so many of those members to our community for help, with computers and computer software. But there was no help coming. And there was the day we had my younger brothers, lady, and then, somebody told them, in a meeting, we brought two computers. Three days later, gave them one, two weeks, gave them the second one. It's never ready to say thank you, at a time when it was for, uh, everything. So, you have a question. Uh, I know CMC began critical for us against the government. They are targeting you, your businesses, especially your principal, where you keep patrol. And I'm told, or it's already understood that, you were charged in a thirty-five cents, like yellow one, and the government is giving a very ten cent, or even five cent. And then you said that you're gonna fight back the government. And you fight back the government, you're gonna close your, 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 your storage, and then say, I'm not gonna get anything back from you. And if that happened, the history of this of patrol is in the, in the market. And we know that whenever there's a patrol in the market, transportation go off, the cost of living go off. And then, the people get, they're gonna be fighting the government back, but the ordinary people, the sovereign will be one, the people are being protected. Are you simply saying my words to do that, or you're gonna negotiate and take them apart? That's the question. Thank you.
Thank you. The last one.
Alright, uh, you have a question?
Yeah.
I, my question, before I, I'd like to propose my question, if I just can look in here at, uh, who's our guy? And then, sorry, who's our guy?
Yeah, of course.
Uh, we were mentored by, you see, we have seen mentor, like Sawyer, so we kind of grew together under the two teachers, Dr. Sawyer, who was the institutionalist. Uh, Liberia today has the, uh, the great amount of political parties that have been established by individuals, uh, who come and serve these parties and have elections. They go away. Uh, given the fact that we have a mentor, a common mentor, who was an institutionalist, believing several institutions that will last over time. What can you say is, is the issue first, is the issue with political entities that come about that are, that are established by a computer, who do not establish these parties around ideology that we understand in just a time and it's just being after the whole process? Is it a problem with our political, without any electoral system, electoral laws? Uh, what can you say to us sitting here? That after election in two thousand and nine, a CMC will not be, will not have a virtual after two thousand and nine?
Thank you. I will just take the last one from you, and then we will, uh, sorry, uh, so please make a short summary.
I'm very proud, uh, of you for coming. My question is, it has to do with raising the level of interest rate. Have you planned to address the economic frustration of the, of the working class, regatta? I mean, regarding style men wages, and then I'll go straight to, uh, B part of it. It will be, what, what do you think it would be like to live in Liberia on a new regime?
Thank you. And then, to you.
Yes, uh, only issue of the storage, um, the, the government of Liberia every year, through the business that I would collect anything between seventy-five to one hundred million dollars. Um, I have operated from two thousand and sixteen, and the records are there. We have generated over the superior, hundreds of millions of dollars for the economy. In two thousand and sixteen, I decided, because I was, I'm in a general business, there was no storage. And I decided to open a storage. I didn't set the price for storage. The government set the price, I put in storage, and the government said, storage is ten cents. I locate, I sell, keep, into business, and I still go storage, forty-five million dollars, I put in the business. And this is the best thing that I've done in Liberia for more than four years, and I make no profit. And the government collects seven hundred million dollars every year. And some senators, I, I guess, in ignorance, believe that five, ten million generated from my business is the one that also, they are not in the triangle of our country. And just because the senator from Mokati, fusea, CMC, go to Mokati to do some work, so he believe that he uses somehow to start making, making money. Because after all, I make the money and I use it on other people. You have not have that capacity. Again, I don't want to challenge anything. My company is an open company. The money I make, that's what I think, clever person, and in that myself, I said clearly, how I make the money I make, my hard work I have. They have properties, money has sex, a long, this conflict, they cannot share it. Because of that, they're going in different economy, they cannot account for the wealth that they have. Enemy, that is, we have, we've done nothing wrong. Our lawyers are taking the issue to court, it's being dealt in the court of law. And I think they know that, they made a decision that is outside of the scope. And I think that the law takes course, and that the right to, but there's nothing, the United Party is going to, that will derail our mission, you know? It is very sad. There is a government that came and took power from a single government. And now, it's begun in trouble to review for a people. But I can tell you, Captain Efrain, United Party, you can leave power, will replace them, will bring back. So, um, I can go, uh, thank you. And like you said, the same person mentored us, uh, you were a senior in the office, we worked with Dr. Sawyer. Uh, we worked together as, 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 as team, and I just wanted to, you, take you for the time we spent together. Uh, we are very proud of Dr. Sawyer, who then, you know, mentored us, and, uh, you know, may so rest in peace. Um, we are aware of the difficulties political parties have. That's why CMC, before the end of this year, has already secured, uh, a land in Morodea, that will be our headquarters. Also, we have plan for agriculture. Between now and twenty, uh, twenty-nine, CMC will have major farm, especially the Koko farm. Koko, like, at this, uh, they have top position, they have five, fourteen years. I can assure you, before election, the CMC will have nothing less than three thousand acres of Koko farm in Liberia. This has a revenue, uh, generation to pass there on the new. This has a revenue of generation capacity of 45 million dollars a year. We believe that that will keep us going as a party. And we use that money to have real estate, which we are investing to make sure. Putting the party and stipulate on the party of individual is a disaster. When the capacity of the individual is hindered, then the party capacity is very well done. And right now, we're doing a lasting legacy. And enduring political party, our name and our hope will be the test of time. And I can assure you that CMC will be the first party in Nigeria to dedicate its own national identity. Have you think of that now? You know, recognizing wanting a dedicated entity will be the first to dedicate our national identity. The witch. They speak the wrong way with people in the way to division. The prestige in our country is high. And politician, and that's why if you insist on debating, the only politician you have, they don't even have assets to details. They just want to play. I hope that you will accept sweet English or sweet talk or dancing. And then rally, crowd, so that you can vote for them. You got to check that. I'll take it with you, scenarios. The government of Nigeria is away. They collect around 220 million dollars from all the reception companies. That's all for the expo, the mine, the gold, everything that comes out of our country. That's how much we get. The total money that leaves our country from mining activity is between 4 to 6 billion dollars. The Nigerian government, after receiving 220,000, what they about as tax, that's what L R A does. The single case can make 242 million dollars in incentives to those same company. In essence, we pay this company around 10 to 20 million dollars to take away 6 billion dollars from our country. Therefore, the people condition will never change. Sorry, we never go out. Do the free gasoline, do the free gasoline between government and N T V, different things. Do the free gasoline in Nigeria for 1 million dollars. Why should they spend 15, 16 million dollars, let's take it as a free? So we have a way, CMC will cheat government and increase wages. But wages, which is the government work, that's not the solution. The government employ less than 60,000 people. The private sector, the informal sector, employ almost 3 times that amount. And that is the area where it will transform the country. I was, I went to a bar shop yesterday. The, what does that mean? I mean, I felt so proud as a Nigerian to see someone outside of Nigeria, traveling in that world. Let me tell you something, I saw in that world, it are really very beautiful. All of them are the culture of Ternos, and he selling an American. And he has made specific effort. And he has been pursuing his book. Yes, we were lying. This is somewhere where we still invest in this business. Which, 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 this is, this is almost an opportunity that can get thousands of African people. Just by putting 10, 15 million dollars in Nigeria, they say, "Look, all these things, because we are not afraid of them." Clean business. So we have practical solution like prefer. We'll read the book, we'll analyze it, and we'll come to you with practical solution. In a situation like this, I won't take in office, I will invite that in Nigeria. As you say, one party will go to, and the market will go to market, and the market will ask the people there to collect everything that is in Nigeria, and they will keep that money. And what will guarantee them the purchase of that goods and send it to me. Today, none of the government officials have business sense. They can't know how to turn the country around. Innovation, we still operating around 600 million dollars, when that company can make 2 billion dollars easy. Nobody takes 65% from their mineral resources from the companies. Ghana has decided that we don't want to give us a percentage of what you take from our country. If we do that, we will get nothing less than 1 million dollars for all this. Nigeria, Nigeria, export yet over 8 million dollars of gold. The revenue on gold in the Republic of Nigeria, part L R A, is less than 10 million dollars. That's even higher. That's even higher. So we will use practical experience. We use agriculture. Have you given you an example? We, we use 300 million dollars to power us and import here into Nigeria. You need to let for 150 million dollars to make Nigeria self-sufficiently rise to energy. Therefore, reducing the stress on the 1 million dollars by at least 30%. Who's the president, who's the president that running in your company, the president can analyze it, we are doing it. And cannot hear your power. This is not the issue. Don't let nobody fool you. If the president cannot interpret the economy, if the president cannot interpret the logic of law, if the president cannot interpret the logic of government, he will not make the decision. There is a reason why a Greek wrote a story called "The Emperor of the Bulls." It is a psychological book that makes the leader to believe that, why, simply because he said it's not why he wrote it. Our leaders don't want to question what professionals have written there because in the first way, they don't believe that. The question of professional, the question that comes to their mind is that the professional will do that. But they don't know. They don't know. I honestly believe that the president of Nigeria knew that higher people who are telling was not the government, not the way. I honestly believe that. But it doesn't. And it's the same thing all over. I honestly believe that if the CDC government knew that going to be Supreme Court and jacking up injustice and moving him from office, simply because of his opinion were wrong. The power of the leader is the ability to read between the lines. At this point in time, the future of our country does not lie in the hands of those leaders. The lies in the hand. The choice is yours. For the next 2, 3 years, we are going to make the case to you. You are the one who will decide whether you can let be where you are for 19, 19 years and 9 months. You will only take another vote. But they need them around. The risk in going to a new course is better than the risk of returning to the same place, knowing the result. Because you know the result in 44 CMC, you know the result in 44 United Party. If you make that decision in 2029, you see, the innocent man there, she was still living. The lawyer was still living, the chairman was still in house still living. The ordinary people will suffer, but they need to know that if suffer because of their own hands, the power is in their head. And all of their head.
Thank you. And so we have taken this last four questions and one, please be, please be short. We are wrapping up here. We are wrapping up. So, and we are encouraged on our ability to be as succinct as possible. Okay? So let's start with, please be short, no statement before the question. Just ask the question and then just go to the one.
My name is Kusman Bamba. My last one's coming to me. One of the best here, this is a brother. In Nigeria, I have nothing since 1937. That was the last time I cast my vote for a political party. I'm not being attracted to any political party that says that. What I see myself somehow leaning towards is the CMC. I see for easy. If you see a man spending his own money to take care of you, what more about your money? That's how I look at it. What he's doing in Nigba, what he's doing in Opa Kanti, he's using his own money. So I just imagine that if this brother assumed the leadership of Nigeria, what more about the government money? He will not take the government money to pay for it, but spend his own money for that money. That's how I look at it. And I look at it as, that's the Obama of our time, if he's elected. But, inability, I know this is a political party and you have already said that you have interest in running in 2029, in the national campaign. I'm not a candidate. Maybe 8 or 9 percent comes up to the CMC to make a decision. Because the thing that brought me there, when you met me over there, you said, "I like the word, I know he's not ready to go." I said, "Okay, that's my legal way." I agree. Why if, will you guys have a primary before then? Because this is a political party, you can say, "I will be running in 2029." If I remember the CMC, and I would let the challenge to the primary. If I assume the leadership of the party, you say, "I mean..."
Thank you. Let's, let's, let's hear from you. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Dede. It's not just a question of a political place. I drove far to be here, 3 hours, 20 minutes to be here.
He said he drove for far to not support you.
Hello. I got one of the moves, Sawyer.
I know.
I'm the Tappeta, Ghanaian. And I came from a very, so much of the short time, I understand, but it may not seem to be this. Government goes there whenever the short time comes. And the commerce to people over and over. From 1975, according to this story, the retirement gym went on that way. For that time, the person, not only to allow, pray the women and children. When they are saying that the Trump friend of Tappeta hospital, some of the dark on the way come to Tappeta. Some of the give birth when they told we harm. Our brothers, because we are on the way, the people are distributed by the path of humanity. So please, to my, to look into that direction and help the people as a religion to face our goal. And I can assure you, if you face our goal in 2029, I will be your champion here at Tappeta City.
All right. So you and then you again. Okay. Thanks.
All right. I'm going to start off, thank you for coming over. Love me, this is a game. I thought I was going to call you a free player. And I first should call you a free player because we want to praise people together. I remember drawing in a group of people in Nigeria, but while you did, really do something and connect people. I said, "That's my guy." Ask a question of your brother, my brother, yes, I hear. You talked a little bit about agriculture. And I'm sitting there, I'm from a family, my father was a farmer. That's all we do. We don't do it to politics. We vote for you for what you do. But he has a farm, I'm more than 200, it was a farm. But we heard that he wants to move by move, or you can say I don't want it to buy equipment. To help, because that's Indonesia, Africa. What do you do differently with your help, my brother? All you do is work, work, play, fight.
Thank you. How about you?
Yeah. Mr. Benjy, glad to hear you here tonight. My name is Barney Magazin. You heard you would be that there's no more political party is going to be able to win the election. Because of the protection for political parties in Nigeria. Are you hoping to collaborate with a political party? That's a good question to you. Hey, there.
Let's go with one question. Okay, just ask a question, President. I can't talk about that already.
Yeah, I've been asking, I'm gonna, I'm hoping to collaborate, that's all, I mean. Because there are no more political parties going to be able to win the election. First of all, I'm going to be terrible. And then the other one here is, what is your reaction to the outcome of the way you just, that your investigation answered? Are you, are you aware of how the purpose was in Brazil? They are counting on the one person pass. I mean, it sounds, it seems maybe 2, 3 or 4 persons pass. So what are you going to do?
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody. So that's, that's it. That's what I thought. The question to the man, what, on your building. You, a member of the C P B, and you work very closely with a leader of the C P B, Mr. Alexander Tompkins. Would you be willing to go as vice to Alexander Tompkins? Because he also collected a lot of your A M C. That's something that you're hoping to, so he talked about this third thing. And my man, you just talked about collaborating with that, about political party. What do you think about running, working with your friend, I'm sure you're all still friends. Then advise person that you run with Alexander Tompkins.
Thank you. Let me, on a, a bit of rule, that I said. that I said, out in Nigba, across from Nigba. Whatever that is wrong with Nigba normally represents my primary concern. And, uh, we will, I promise you, we fix that with our people. To make sure that no frightful woman does come over to the hospital. We do our best, our people. We have to change. It is unfortunate, but in this way, we do the assessment. And I give you my word for this. Look, they want man. I mean, it's a shame, honestly. If, if you see a high cost of potential value, then I will not invest in that. But we're giving over a hundred and fifty million dollars in goodwill for that. We're giving two hundred million dollars to consent the community that have our, our resources from here. That should be meaningful to us. That all time, I mentioned, never be broke, it's an asset. And this will be government's investment. And that is the only, all those men, fine men in Nigeria should be a candidate. That's why I'm not the first thing we'll do is to open the parrot to bed. Parrot to bed are so indifferent, they don't want to pass it to me. They are not going to come and incubate parrot to production by investing in, uh, um, 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 mechanics, funding, by investing in full processing plants and by a farming market coming to my brother and brothers' market. And then you show that he has all his own in place. And you have over three hundred thousand in America. But should if you have home, eat a room full and you making that money as a reward. And maybe that should that will come back to us. He, he for the change. Instead of, uh, my brother going to save the money, you enter my area, he is forced to save the economy. And those are the things that will have to change. So, I'm calling investment, uh, I don't know, uh, your brother, uh, we, he and I can talk and see how we can do, and I have to do. But the main solution is that individual, is that victory. And it takes not government policy to change the faith of people who want their life, want enough to open the farm. Um, collaboration way. You know, the way the CMC is designed, everyone who sees this, you know, you're the market, they're going to be there, of course. Honestly. They are hard to do. There are people who believe that we can be this trouble. Just because you want to be heard, you want to be perceived in power. But they don't want you. All the doors, the two parties are closed. If I call, to the party right now today, and they think, oh, I come over there next to you, I'll join you in the party, would they like a comment? They sit in the seat. Those two parties have failed the country. And what you would do, it's simply not reasonable. We look for a new path, it's going to let you in. You can choose us, all the general. When you will not force us into marriage, I will kill the dream, we are starting. Um, the thing with why? We don't have two system. Seventy percent of the people who stay in a classroom to teach or treatment are not teaching. They are half liter people. About eighty percent of our school, that our teachers, our rock, our, our volunteer teachers, we cannot understand. Our education system is wrong. Always so. Our solution will feed the world with the best you see is a simple, it's a very simple process. Where as a party will be sent, I'm there and take office. First step is to pick young and educated people that are just going to their own college and send them to teacher training. The woman who pick them up will start to pay you. Send them for training. Prepare those who are in the classroom as much as they have a training, as much as they have a promise to them, but they be there. Prepare them, provide a necessary form and honor to retire them. Over if you know, two years and take a platform and teaching will be a new generation of teachers. Fairly well paid. And the higher, I mean, the farther away you go from the category, the more money you will get. The farther you go through the interior, the more money you will get. We will revolutionize our teaching business. If we want to change this country, that education progress. And to do that, we invested that we have the money, we know where to find the money. People not paying the way as the tactic is trying to. Government waving over two hundred million dollars in taxes, will collect all those money, will reduce government payroll by fifty percent. And will take that money to pay teachers, so that education can have value. So that young men that are studying from colleges can cross Nigeria, can have. While they look to their dream, they can be in transition and live in the sunlight. You can be a teacher and still have a vision to be a doctor. You can be a teacher and still have the vision to be an internist. Will put further transition, will put qualified teachers in the classroom and will be show with tradition. And most importantly, will create independent educational destiny. To take the miniature education out of the way, the same thing you have in Panama. Will create any kind of destiny, so that that destiny will manage the education system of the area. You hire the teacher, you, you pay them, you find them, you create specific rules to the environment and the area. In a different way, generalize for the continent. So that the miniature education will not be there as a regulatory authority. For today, the miniature education is consuming more than forty percent of the education budget and doing nothing. Doing absolutely nothing that will change. Which is that around, we put more than three, we double teacher pay, we will retire teachers that are not competent, we are starting teacher training institute that has the conflict. And not many of them are going to come from college, we have the opportunity to go. And like I said, the farther away the more money will be, the more money will be. So when you want more money as a teacher, also have a material, you are committing, your pay will be the one for some time. You can move to the other side of the line, people are probably waiting to come in the city. And then. So, on the issue of, if the crimes, um, no, the answer is no. I, I, I would believe, there's no rule in that way. And I'm not going to count around here just to be a person. I absolutely no intention to be there. You know, my partner, he said that the country needs a radical change. The country needs a revolutionary change. The country needs someone that is practical, someone that is pragmatic. And oddly, that there is no legislation that is as pragmatic as me. And the right question for one this country is transforming in a circular time, it's what it's standing for you. Uh, my partner's asking whether if you're running the party, stand by the party, you have the chance. What will the constitution, that's why I said that personally I decided to run for president. CNT have their set rules. And anybody can be qualified to the system to be. That's why in the CNT constitution, the political leader is not the president. And there's not an automatic transition for political leader, he's president. Two day proposition, and if you want to compete against me, I'm ready for you, my friend. If you wait, if you wait, I will give you my force to go.
What about the rest? You have all the great, you have all the great programs to, to end, uh, Mr. Mahatma D N, uh, to secure. Okay, you have the peace. Please have a seat. Okay, maybe to, please, please have a seat for my brother. Have a seat. Right, ladies and gentlemen, applause.
Well, Mr. Benjy, I'm Benjy. Uh, member of the Y S C, our CMC, our distinguished community. Uh, I am grateful today to be white here to share a few talks. As the community's organization, the organization of the Brown Party in North American Party, never fails. We welcome the parents, inspirants, political parties to engage and interact with our diaspora. Minnesota has long been a powerful position on the political landscape within the diaspora. Serving as the legitimate for emerging political inspirants and parties influencing the number. Disturbing in recent time, every party of Kennedy that has emerged has made a political preparation to Minnesota. On behalf of you are continuing to strengthen that tradition and you have done it so well. On behalf of the chairman, the board, right, just start remember how position appears in Minnesota. And in time and break of Benjy, we want to formally welcome you to the Twin City. We hope your stay will be meaningful and productive as you engage our community and its people. We commend your willingness to confront the issue as they exist in our political disposition. Demonstrated by your willingness to subject yourself to the scrutiny of community through this Q and A forum. Your openness and ability to address issues directly are evident and we appreciate it. We extend our best wishes for a constructive and constructive exchange today. And we look forward to continue that law that respect our nonprofit policy stance while fostering informed participation in moment news. Again, we say thank you, welcome, and you do well.
Thank you. So that's, I'm pretty grateful, my, uh, Unico brother, so how many Unico members are here today? Can you please stand, all the Unico people here, please stand up. Oh, that, that all the Unico people here, so go, come out. We will see you tomorrow, we have a meeting tomorrow, so go, come out, and give a quick announcement. Uh, so all the Nigba residents, please come out tomorrow.
Thank you. Praise the Lord.
It.
Well, uh, my name is Wongo N'Oway. I am a gold five member of Unico Party. Uh, I will make you, I'm a gold five member of Unico Party. And, uh, a full chair for Unico Minnesota chapter. Uh, tomorrow, I just want to announce tomorrow, we will see our representative, objective number seven on the responsibility and the partisan from CMC tomorrow in our Unico community center. The time is, because this is Nigeria, we get to work, so it's four o'clock, we officially begin five o'clock, uh, American time, not like your time. So please take note of the time and please let me there, American. We do this for all our local, even my second hour a year. On the time, we including all the local visiting in America, if they say our community center, so we host them. And we can go for any better to get, thank you.
Alright, those who, what they close remarks, uh, by, by, by Moana, oh, okay. Moana Dogged. Oh, okay, this is, uh, a handoff of what's second, right, this is, he has something to say, can you hear him, possibly? So, uh, Mrs. Lotret, uh, please come to the corner. Well, uh, this is.
Hold on, hold on, please.
What a surprise, this, uh, this is somebody from, um, Minnesota chapter, so your daughter wife. Uh, nice, that's how we put it together, uh. And I just read it.
That's game, man, that's game.
It says, it says, CMC Minnesota chapter, award of appreciation, president of the United States. Okay, we just want to acknowledge the work that she's doing, we're gonna follow you, we're gonna follow your life. And we see the good job that she's been doing back home. And we just want to, in our own way, Minnesota chapter, I want to acknowledge that. Want to say thank you, Mrs. Bolson, for having had the help from the Congress see us in this new Twin City. We appreciate that, we want to just want to figure that. This also is from, as you can see, this beautiful ingredient, it's called the CMC, this is from, uh, the Minnesota chapter of CMC. And it reads, CMC Minnesota chapter, award of distinction, president of our Musta, Assam, ability, twenty twenty five. Yeah, we appreciate everything you have done for us, and can, for the country, so, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, now we have our chief manager, uh, Moana, who is our top, he is the vice president of Minnesota CMC chapter. Hello, everybody, hello, everybody. We want to say thank you, thank you, Minnesota, thank you.
I want to say thank you, thank you, Minnesota, thank you. I am very, 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 very impressed and happy. Our community have responded, and I want to say this all to the people, say thank you. I have a lot of power for the little leader tonight. You do well, right? Thank you, thank you. Want to say thank you, on behalf of CMC Minnesota, on behalf of CMC, the United States, our global leader, and all of our leader, I want to say thank you. We appreciate it, we show up, this is Minnesota, that's how we do it. Want to say thank you, and you have a wonderful night, thank you all for coming.
Oh, there's, come out, I obey all the guys.
All right, so you're full out there, and let me say, thanks to all of you for coming. It's great, it's great to see you all.